Okay, we have 6:00 PM on the dot Verizon time. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask Shandra to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2018 or 2020, whatever year we're in. Start over. On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on the website and on social media on Friday, September 11th.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Dalabarka?
Hi, everybody. I am here. Good to see you all.
Hello, Lou. Mr. Ellis? Let me see.
Here, here.
Yeah. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here. Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, may I have a motion and a second to go into executive?
This is Mr. Price. I'll make that motion.
I will second it. Mrs. Sullivan?
Okay. Raise our hands, signifying I. By unanimous consent, and we will go into executive. So remember, we click out of here and click into the other meeting. Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 7:02. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And if I could ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, September 11th.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Dalabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis? Give me a minute. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Price? Mr. Price, I thought I saw. I'll give him a minute. Mrs. Sullivan? I'll give her a minute. Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi? Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Castellano?
Here.
And we do have a quorum. I will just say one more time, if we have Mr. Ellis, Mr. Price, or Mrs. Sullivan, if they've gotten on. I don't see them quite yet. Mrs. Salagi, okay. You do have a quorum, Mr. President. It's up to you if you want to wait a few minutes or just go ahead and start the introductions.
Okay, well, we're gonna start and kick off, and I want to welcome everyone to our September work meeting, and thank you all for being here. We are going to salute the flag. When the flag appears on the screen, after the flag salute, we are going to have a moment of silence for one of our bus drivers who has sadly passed, Mr. Eugene Gates. So first, we will have the flag salute when the flag appears on your screen. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you all very much. So welcome back. It's September. School has begun, and I just want to, I want to thank everyone involved in opening school up this year. I've said it before that closing school last year was the toughest thing we did, except for opening school this year, which is and will continue to be even harder. The hardest thing we've ever done. So I want to thank again our administration, Dr. Gruccio and her team, for the tremendous leadership provided, Ms. Anaya, Dr. Hiri, Mr. Santilli, Dr. Charlton. I want to thank, of course, our teachers, our paras, all of our staff, everyone working so hard, transportation, food service, buildings and grounds. I hate to mention, because then I always wind up forgetting someone, a special shout out to everyone involved with educating our special needs population. We're so grateful for what you're doing and for getting things kicked off this week. So welcome back, everyone, and thank you. And I will turn it now over to Dr. Gruccio for a welcome back update.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Castellano. I appreciate your kind words. And I too would like to thank everyone who supported us through this endeavor of opening schools this year. And welcome, welcome to a brand new school year. A lot has happened since our last board meeting on August 18th, and I'd like to just take a moment to update you from then until now. So if you've been following along with our live meetings and my weekly district newsletters, you have a grand idea about how we had to practically reinvent our educational tapestry of this school district with a little amount of time and not so much clear guidance. But do know that it was the internal strength and timeless efforts of my staff and the stakeholders here who supported us as we pieced together the many moving parts into a plan for all to follow to open this school year. I'd like to begin with the New Jersey Department of Education and how they just recently approved our Egg Harbor Township Road Back to School Plan that includes a combination of virtual teaching and learning and in-person learning for students who needed special services. New staff orientation was held on August 26th and 27th, and we welcome new staff for the first time ever into the Egg Harbor Township School District. And this event was held virtually and successfully. So thank you, Dr. Charlton, for facilitating the welcome meeting and for building an agenda that included training and information sessions for our new staff. Thank you to our IT department, Ms. Leanna Mullen, our supervisors, and teachers who assisted with these trainings. The last four days of September, I'm sorry, the first four days of September were designated for teachers and staff to engage in professional learning opportunities where time was spent on training for virtual teaching and learning, new add-on tools, and the importance of equity for all. Students arrived into the virtual learning world on September 8th, and teachers spent the first week with a focus on our mission, embrace, where conversations in the classroom were centered on learning about each student and their needs. Time was provided for students to express themselves and to get to know their teacher and classmates as well. Our towns program offered in-person care all day long, and still is, and our aspire program is operating in the virtual mode after school hours. Our dining services is back to preparing meals for students and families for pickup and delivery, and close to 10,000 meals have been distributed just this week. The week of September 8th was also dedicated to resource distribution, where we had a process in place in each of our schools over four days, four evenings, where parents and students came to the schools to get their materials, their books, and Chromebooks if needed for their classroom performance. On September 14th, just this week, we've implemented Phase 1, and this includes servicing students in need of special services, our preschool inclusion program, our preschool disabled program, and our multiple disabled classes. They're up and running in all of our buildings with a smooth transition back to some source of sense of normalcy and servicing these students who are in need. We have an operational plan in place that's inclusive of health and safety measures for both students and staff in the classrooms and on our school buses. Thank you to Mr. Santilli, Mr. Dorsel, our special education supervisors, principals, our transportation, food services, and facilities departments who have made this happen. It is surely an example of teamwork at its best. Videos are available on school websites for parents and students to learn more about expectations for programs that are being held in the school and expectations regarding students in the virtual world and expectations for the schools. Our ELL screening has been taking place in person in three of our schools district-wide. This entails proficiency testing of students that requires one-on-one speaking sessions with a teacher. We're almost completed that process, and Dr. Schreiner reports that everything has been going exceptionally well. Yesterday was the official start of fall practice for our high school fall athletic teams. All participants and coaches are adhering to health screening, social distancing, and outdoor-only practices. It's an update on safety and security. Our vestibules are near completion. Each school has a bit of a different look this year once you get inside. However, more importantly, we are now offering another layer of safety and security. So overall, our school year opened smoothly and successfully. While I really miss taking those bus rides on the first day with the students on opening day and feeling that excitement and the jitters of the first day and the newness of the fall. I sit here confident, knowing that our teachers gave 100% and gave their all in greeting their students with a warm welcome to their virtual classroom and embraced all their students with open arms. Virtual teaching and learning is in place. We have been awaiting a Google Enterprise update, and we hear that it will soon arrive within the next week or so. And I do realize that virtual learning may not work for everyone. Some may be frustrated and some may be experiencing difficulties. But please know that we are here to assist you. We have been assisting folks, and we have been doing our very, very best to do so. But I do have to remind everyone that the New Jersey Department of Education and the Road Back to School plans includes the mandate for virtual learning. Definitely have to have that option. Our plan includes a hybrid model, which also includes a virtual learning choice that's slated to begin on October 26th. Excuse me. Therefore, it is important for us to adjust to this virtual learning and teaching. So if anyone is having trouble with a device, schedule, or tool, please reach out to your child's principal, and do know that we are to help you, and we are sensitized to your feelings at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Great report. And I'm, you know, very encouraged to hear the good things that are happening in our district despite, you know, the obvious issues that we're all facing. And I again want to extend my thanks to everyone. I know I missed some groups, and that's always the downside of mentioning some, and you always wind up leaving some out. So from our agenda, I see that our next report will be dealing with our track and field.
Yes, it will. And with the assistance of our IT department, we're gonna pull up that presentation. Okay, this evening, we'd like to present the current reality of the Egg Harbor Township High School Track and Field. So this will be an update presented to you by myself, Dr. Hiri, and Ms. Anaya. Hopefully, my voice will make it through. Okay, next slide, please. Right, so this is the current reality and what's going on. The sign is posted on our stadium fence. This facility, both track and turf, are closed until further notice. No entrance for any reason, so athletes are not permitted in this area for practice right at this time, nor are they able to use it for competition. And we're gonna explain why. Next. So just to remind everybody that various sports and tournaments take place in the stadium on the high school turf and the track. We also have band that band uses it for practice and for competitions, and we use the turf for graduation as well as for academic reasons for physical education classes. They also use the track for physical education classes. The funds generated from the use of this facility, NJSIA uses the facility for state competitions as well as our band, and it brings revenue to our district, our booster clubs, and the local economy just right around the corner of Wawa Primo's Hotels shop right in the area because of the crowds that are brought to the area. Thousands of people attend the NJSIA events, and as you know, just our graduation alone brings thousands of folks into the stadium. Next slide. So just to give a little history, the original installation occurred in 2009. This was a 2008 referendum project for 1.7 million that went out to the community because the community was very, very supportive and interested in a turf field and an all-weather track. The manufacturer of this facility was named, or it still is called Hellis. Not real popular in the state of New Jersey these days, but when, at the time when we put in this turf, it was the turf that the Dallas Cowboys used in their stadium. So the turf has an expected lifespan of eight to 10 years, and currently, we are starting our 12th year with the turf that is in place. The grooming and maintenance of this turf costs $5,000 a year, plus a $12,000 bill for GMAX testing annually. And that's very important for the health, safety, and welfare of those who perform and participate on that turf. And we're gonna explain what the GMAX testing is. I also want to remind everyone, this was a referendum project, a successful referendum project, and also part of a strategic planning discussion of the Board of Education back in 2008, where there was a voice, that there was a need for an all-weather turf, all-weather track to meet the needs of the community and the athletes. Next. So GMAX testing, what is it? GMAX measures the shock of the turf itself, of the performance. So the turf needs to be able to absorb a person that falls or hits and be able to give a spring back for that protection. So industry experts recommend that this testing takes place on an annual basis, which we do, and we comply. It's just like, you know, getting the oil changed in your car and getting that checkup for your body to make sure that everything's in good operation. The GMAX consistency will be largely affected by the level of the maintenance to the field. So the longer, we do our yearly maintenance each year on the field, but as you could imagine, the consistency of it and the performance level of it deteriorates over years. That's why they only give you a 10-year lifespan. After that, you're gonna start seeing that it's not gonna test well. It's not gonna be safe. Next. Our 2020 GMAX test and field inspection occurred this year on July 23rd, and that was performed by athletic field consultants, and the inspector came here. He tested the turf, and he gave a report in which I'm gonna have Dr. Hiri share with you, because not only did we read the report, but Dr. Hiri called the vendor and had, or the inspector, and had a one-on-one conversation with the inspector. Dr. Hiri?
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. As a result of my conversation with Mr. Kalise and the foundation of the report he provided, he indicated that the field has had become highly compressed over the number of the years, particularly in those areas that are overused. And when I say overused, the corners were corner kicks in soccer taken, the goal area, that would also be the goal line for football, but the goal area for soccer, and of course, the center of the field where most of the initial games start. So as a result of that, it's really become compressed, meaning that it doesn't have the same resiliency that it did when it first came into manufacturer standards. We actually had to add, or they actually had to add rubber this year in order to make sure that the low wear areas were brought up to GMAX passing scores. And as a result of them adding the additional rubber, you can see in the illustration right there where they added some more, they were able to get a passing score, but this is an additional maintenance factor that is indicative of the aging and the wearing of the field. And the readings in several test locations were significantly elevated, which gives you a field that is not uniformly leveled throughout, creating high spots and low spots, which becomes difficult when you're running on the field because you're expecting your foot to be one place, and all of a sudden, it's slightly higher or slightly lower. The report goes on to say that the fibers across the body of the field are so degraded that the manufacturer's fiber height and recommendation infill depth cannot be attained, and that's simply a function of use, the amount of use and the number of years that it's been in service. The blades of grass, which are supposed to be standing erect, have a tendency now to bend over, and as a result of them, it's not possible to backgrade with all the rubber material that would bring it back to manufacturer standards. This is a great deal of concern because the playability of the field in respects the footing of the athletes winds up having to be compromised, and it's the possibility that, you know, cutting, placing your cleats in and turning left or right may not be as designed by the manufacturer of the field. And again, it's a result of the amount of use and the number of years that the field has been in service for us. Next one? Okay.
This is Mr. Price. I'm testing on the phone. Am I coming through?
Yes, you are.
Oh, thank you. All right, I'll stand by. I had to call in on the telephone. I had technology issues, so I'll be listening on the phone.
Okay. And the recommendations that were presented by Mr. Kalise, and these are not my words, they are direct quotes from him and from the report. "The field is now 11 years old and has served you well. Plans for removal and replacement should be made." And he concluded his report that, in his opinion, the field needs to be removed and replaced now. This, of course, is concerning for us because we have somebody who goes and tests the fields on an annual basis, who is certified in the industry, telling us that our field needs to be replaced, and it's not something that should be considered in the future, but it's something he's recommending to be now. Now, he's not a manufacturer, he's not a restorer, he's an independent evaluator of turf fields. So his words carry very heavy with us. Next slide, please. And I think this is where Ms. Anaya is gonna come in, if that's correct?
No, it's me again. Now we're gonna talk, that was about the turf. Now we're gonna discuss the track piece. So the track itself was originally installed with the turf back in 2009. It was a part of the referendum project. It was part of the strategic plan. But the track is in poor shape as well. Over the years, we've had ATT Sports come in and do some work on the track. Their most recent recommendation to resurface the track was back in 2017 and 18. During that year, we had $4,700 repaired onto the track. In 1819, we had a drainage project that we put into place, where we were able to do some work under and around the track. In 2019 and '20, we spent collectively, let's see, $9,420 and $6,430 for repairs, and those repairs, which I will show you in a little bit, are already need repair again, okay? They have problems, there's separation, and there's wear and tear in the track. Spring 2020, we did a boring report that the board approved that we have done because I had mentioned the situation in my last two State of the Schools this past year and the year before, that the turf and the track were in need of repair, replacement. This boring report cost almost $6,000, and it was approved under $6,421, but it went down, I think it was about 10 feet, 12 feet, Shandra, correct me if I'm wrong, to see what's going on underneath the track. And the report that we got back is that it needs to be resurfaced because it is beyond repair. Next slide.
Kim, if I'm gonna ask you to just take a quick break, I understand a couple of board members are having some technical difficulty, and if we can check in with Shandra and see where is everyone? How are we doing?
So we're having a lot of technical difficulties right now. Mr. Price has called in. He has the phone number that you see displayed. At this point, I told him stay on. At least we have him. I am about to have Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Salagi call in as well. They are having some technical difficulties on a higher level. Can't explain it. I walked them through several times, several meetings, but we're having issues today. Mr. Ellis did leave and got frustrated, so he's not gonna be able to get back on. But at this time, I think I'm going to just get back on the phone with them and get them to call in so they're actually participating in the meeting. I may not be able to see them, is the unfortunate piece. We will work this out, hopefully, before next meeting.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Price. I'm calling in by telephone, so I'm able to participate.
Very good. All right, well, we'll go ahead and we'll go forward.
Do you want me to go forward, or should I wait and go backwards a little bit? Let me know.
I don't, I think we're gonna have to go ahead because I don't know how long this is gonna take. Mr. Ellis left or was having problems? I'm not clear on that.
I don't know.
I'm not clear with that, and I guess Shandra's working on it. You know, I think we have to just keep going forward.
Okay, okay. So here are some photographs that Dr. Hiri provided for us of our track. The picture on the left is the wear and tear. In fact, NJSIA told us, not this year, but the year before, that they would not be holding their events at our field any longer because the track was in poor condition, and they could not subject athletes to the track. Up top is a piece of patchwork that has come apart, and down the bottom is showing you a crack probably due to rain and water, and it looks like there's some grass grown in there as well. Next slide. Over on the left, both are areas that we already repaired. This is one of the runways, I think, to the pole vault area that already has been repaired and is already starting to rot again. Over to right is the $9,000 project that we put in place, I believe, two years ago because this is when NJSIA told us that the starting block, the starting areas were poor, and they were in poor shape. So we placed this foot and a half, two-foot area that went across eight lanes of the track into the track, and it's already separating, and as you can see up on the top here, that there is grass growing into the areas where it's starting to separate, okay? So that becomes dangerous and down in this area as well. Okay, so our current reality, turf and track are closed. They're closed to athletes, individuals, activities, phys ed if we were in session, in person. All three of our home high school football games have been relocated to away team fields. We've investigated the use of the Miller School, but that cannot happen because of social distancing, and we're allowed 500 spectators, and Dr. Hiri can explain that if you need to know that, but Miller School was not going to work for us. All other sports will play their 2020 home games on designated grass fields as long as we don't get hit with rain. We may have to cancel games or move them to away sites because we do have some grass fields that hold a lot of water. We cannot host our band competitions this year. We cannot host home We cannot host our band competitions this year. Uh, we cannot host um home uh track events and, or most of our home track events, which would be our, our cross country. And um, if we don't have the field, um, we, we wouldn't be able to host graduation on, on the field. So, next slide. Just give you some pictures of the turf where grass is growing through the turf. And that black stuff, as you see, is the fill and the, the unevenness of the fill. So the fill is being dispersed and it, 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 it cannot be evenly um put into the turf. Um, it's just, it's the functionality is not working. Next. And that eagle is supposed to be white. So again, what you see, those dark areas uh is the fill that's been dispersed. And um, it's not really staying where it's supposed, supposed to be. Because the turf is not standing up, it's matted and the fill is not staying inside um the fibers in the way it was designed to be. Next slide. So this gives you a cost analysis. To maintain a gla- grass field every year costs us about $52,500. That has to do with seeding, um watering, mowing, lining and um treating versus $6,200 per year uh to maintain a turf. And that includes that G max testing that has to occur every year for the health, safety and welfare of everyone that's on there. So um, this is just a example that'll give you um graph, an idea of our cost analysis. It does not include pricing for replacement of sod seeding, um unplayable field conditions. Um, because when we have overuse of those other areas, the seeding and the sod and the, the um treatments has to occur on those other areas. So we'd include those prices. Uh, removal cost and annual maintenance fee over the next 10 years. Chandra, you want to explain the finance stuff? Please.
Sure. Um, next slide, I guess, or right up from here? Thank you.
There you go.
Um, so as Dr. Gucio stated, the previous information that's been shared um over the past few years, our G max tested has been discussed at the board level as well as um the budget discussions in 1920. Um, the two through the strategic plan as well. Um, we're saying, hey, why now? We do have a limited timeframe for this year to install. Um, the track does need 45 degree temperature and rising in order for it to settle. If we don't do it in the fall, it'll have to wait for the spring, but there's spring sports and then it'll be summertime. Um, that's when every other district or any other area that would install turf usually does it in the spring and the summer. So we'll be competing against other entities at the same time. Uh, right now the turf is already closed and games have been moved. Um, the consultant recommended um that we begin um the replacement in six to eight weeks or the six to eight week replacement project now to avoid the transition um between the summer and spring competitions. Um, and also be completed in time for spring activities and graduation. Uh, next slide. So um, just to highlight um the purchasing opportunity, we have gotten um Dr. Gooch and I have been meeting with several entities trying to figure out what the plan was over the last year or so. So we can make a recommendation when the time comes. Um, basically the purchasing opportunity is for under a million dollars. We can get the track and the turf um redone using um the Ed Services Commission co-op pricing. Um, what that means for us, they say, why now? In order for us to move immediately. Um, we have looked at bids, recent bids through our architect. We've looked at um other um just kind of quotes, people who have gone out to the turf and um track and given us some quotes for replacement. Um, it happens to be the best price we got um through FieldTurf. So why contract with FieldTurf? Of all the meetings we've had, they have given us the best recommendation um and pack, and package. And it goes through the co-op pricing. Um, they have done um over 800 fields, existing sitting fields now in New Jersey between colleges, universities and high schools and other areas like that. And they did win the last three recent bid awards. We talked to our architect about going to bid and FieldTurf has been winning and they are part of a co-op. So um, that would work out to be um the same result, but just a delayed um process. Um, I did, when speaking to FieldTurf, um, every conversation we've had with the different vendors um talked about a 10-year expected life, 10-year expected life. Proposals kept coming in with five or eight-year warranties. I had a problem with that. Pushed back a little bit and said, you keep talking about a 10-year expect, expectancy. I want your manufacturer to guarantee it for 10 years. FieldTurf was able to move that bar from eight years to 10 years. And the timing of it all, between six to eight weeks, we could have a full installation. Um, how are we going to fund it is always the question. Um, in June, the board did approve up to $2 million um to transfer into capital reserve. This is a capital reserve project. Again, what that means is the board does set aside funds every year to make capital improvements in our buildings and infrastructure um to maintain our investments. And in this particular case, it's a turf and track investment that was done back in 2009, as Dr. Gucio said. And this is just to then maintain that investment. Next slide, please. This is a sample of what they proposed, what it would look like. They used our school colors, which is awesome. Uh, they put in some lines for different sports and how that would look. Next slide, please.
And Chandra, uh, we, we are in discussions. Um, that, that was just a, a, a sample, right?
Yes, yep, that's what they proposed.
Sample, yep.
Yep. So what are the next steps? Um, essentially there is um, next steps at the board level would be the resolution to withdraw from the capital reserve to fund this replacement project. Um, um, then to um, well, that's not a second bullet. The first two bullets are the same item. Capital reserve withdrawal at the September 22nd meeting to replace this. Uh, we would then award the contract to FieldTurf using the co-op um pricing. Um, then have conversations with our athletics, um, our athletes and our coaches. And then also um go ahead and replace the, you know, the process would be to replace the track while the turf is being um, excuse me, while the field is being manufactured. I can't even read the screen. Which would be approximately three weeks of manufacturing and three weeks of track. And then flip it to then replace the field for the next three weeks. That's where the six to eight week timeline came through. Um, and then that would allow the track and the field to rest during the winter and be ready for spring sports and graduation, et cetera. Go Eagles.
Okay, and that's our presentation um to the Board of Education and the public tonight. I know um there's many coaches and athletes who are wondering why they um could not be on the field. Um, especially when they come up and they see that sign. Um, basically it's for the health, safety and welfare of, of the student athletes and the, and the coaches at this point that the facility um is not uh compatible um for, and not ready for competition or practice at this time.
And Dr. Gucio, I can just, there are three callers on the call and it is Mike Price, Marita Sullivan and Barbara Salagi. Just so everybody knows, three phone numbers on the side. Thank you.
Dr. Here, do you have anything to add? You've been out there as early as uh this afternoon, seeing what was going on.
Uh, yeah, we have, obviously, as you have already mentioned, uh, cordoned off the field uh to protect any um athlete or coach that's going on the field. Um, of course, the, the athletic community in the high school is very concerned and, you know, worried about whether or not the facilities are going to be available for them. And um, you know, I, I did mention to uh our fall coaches to reiterate because practices started again uh yesterday, that the turf field and the all-weather trap were off limits for the time and that we were uh presenting a, a recommendation for remediation to the Board of Education. And that uh I would report to them uh at some point in time as soon as some direction is provided.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Castellano. That concludes the superintendent's uh presentation for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um, very informative. And uh, we are now going to go to finance and operations. And uh, we'll start with our committee report if Ms. Sullivan's able to do so uh telephonically.
Got word.
And if not, we can have uh Ms. Anaya fill in. What do you think?
I'll give her a minute. Um.
Okay.
She is ending in the numbers. Just see which one is she. She's ending in five zeros. So we see, we see five zero there. Mrs. Sullivan, I'm not sure if you can unmute yourself or if you were muted by our side.
This is Mr. Price. I have a housekeeping question. Maybe Sandra, you could help me?
Go ahead.
Okay, we press star six to, to unmute and then how do we mute again? Star what?
I was just going to ask you to use your telephone that has the mute button on it. Probably be easier than star sixing. I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'll just mute it um myself on my telephone. All right, thank you.
Yeah. So, here's Mrs. Sullivan. I see her come through. Okay.
I think star six and you get your horoscope.
Here's my horoscope. Our meeting took place on the first of the month. In attendance with myself, uh, Barbara Salagi, uh, Ray, Ellis, Chandra, we have Tom Beck there. We also had Mike Price. Um, have our, our full agenda, in the agenda, our full report is there. Uh, we did have conversations about um, let me find my paper now. Where is it? I'm so discombobulated. Here we go. Sixty-four twenty-one. We'll see some big purchase orders on there because we had a lot of uh PPE. That's personal protective equipment for all of our teachers and for our students. So there's some big TOs with that on it. Um, we also did talk about uh facilities running, running underground wiring. Um, we continue to follow our transportation plan, which is um from now through December 31st. And that seems to be going pretty well. Tom Beck spoke on meals for students. They're going to receive breakfast and eat it there. At the time, we were talking about having a grab lunch on the way out. I don't know how that, if that is taking place or if we decided to have them in, uh, eat in place. I'll have to refer to Chandra for that. School signage we spoke about and we specifically spoke about um drugs and weapon signs that you cannot get within the school with, within so many feet if you are carrying a weapon or if, of course, if you have drugs. Um, so Chandra was checking into that for us. Other than that, all of the signage is being done now. It should be clear for people where to go for registration, for facilities. Um, each of the schools, hopefully, will have a nice bright new um sign plus all of the signage that's actually on the ground that shows um where cars go and how they line up if they're dropping off students, et cetera. Um, let's see, what else do I have here? We did approve $2 million. I heard Chandra say that to go back into the capital reserve. Um, I believe Chandra will talk about that. Am I right with that, Chandra, or no?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. And finally, um, we did talk about having um, oh geez, I don't know, uh, finding substitutes for the business administrative office because uh some people will not be there. And that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I can just add a few things. Um, so the Grab and Grow update, uh, we met prior to the full phase one being um, being finalized. And after speaking with the building administration as well as the special ed department, the students are actually getting breakfast and lunch. Um, preschool disableds getting it in the classroom. Um, the other grade levels are getting it in a common area, open space, whether it's a cafeteria, gymnasium or the commons in the high school as an example. So we are actually having them eat um spaced socially distanced away, but not in classrooms except for the preschool disabled class, which has less students in it and they all don't eat at the same time is how we're working on that. Um, just an overall vestibule update, um, by the end of this week, the final touches will be, the finished work will be done. Um, they are mostly operational. We did have one um delay at Slavo Elementary due to other issues that had to be done in the front office work area um that delayed that project. But all the other areas are um functioning and we're excited to see the finished work at the end of this week. Um, the last thing was fund balance. Um, as you see in the report, um, for 1920, the board had done resolutions back in June. Uh, we were in the midst of closing out. We're very close. The auditor was scheduled to come in about two weeks to start their process, um, which will give us true what we call the hard numbers. Um, but our soft numbers with my closeout, just on our books here, we looking at $3 million in the health insurance reserve. What that is, is the health insurance line closed out with over $4 million in that line, meaning we budgeted so much, $4 million was unspent. That's like a big number, huge discrepancy from what was budgeted. I will just say that everything came to a halt in March and no um elective surgeries were done. Um, although COVID expenses were mostly the expenses for the last three months, we had huge, huge savings um from people just not going to any kind of doctors for three months on top of just um being self-funded, which is exactly the right decision we made at the right time, um, which is saving us quite a bit of money. So the $3 million goes into a reserve and prepare, preparation for this year or any future years. Um, because as you know, reserves are not restricted to any particular year. That is to prevent any um huge um ebbs and flows in our self-funded accounts because we have to pay for our own clothes. And if you have a bad year, you have to have cushions. So that's really what that's for. Specific reserve for health insurance can't be spent for other things um outside of a resolution from the board. Um, $2 million in capital reserve. Again, that's the capital improvements we talk about. Just reinvesting into our own, own investments and our improvements in our buildings. Um, and we're looking at roughly 3.8 million to go towards the 2122 budget. This path here to put in perspective was at 3 million. We're looking at 3.8. As the auditor does their closeout, there may be some ups or downs, but we're looking at a nice, healthy offset. Um, as this has gotten, um, I have gotten a lot of phone calls, believe it or not, um, into the business office about taxpayers asking, where's my credit? Where's the credit? Because we were closed of spring of last year and we're opening up hybrid this year. Um, they'd like a refund. I get it. So I basically explained to them the fund balance process. Once we close out a year, whatever's not spent goes towards future budgets. I do believe the budget for 21 and 22 will consider the 3.8 million I just mentioned as well as any savings identified so far this year that the board would like to allocate to that year. And that'll truly help us offset um the cut that we just experienced of $4 million as well as preparing better for that year. More to follow in the fall and the winter with budget season 2122. That's my update.
Thank you, Chandra.
Very good. Uh, and I'm going to see if there's any uh questions or comments from board members on finance and operations.
Yeah, this is Mr. Price, uh, Mr. President. I do have a question I want to follow up with, please.
Sure.
Yeah, in regards, we talked about the signage replacement and uh maybe Sandra could elaborate a little bit further. We, she did some checking into the drug-free, weapon-free, school zone signage. And um, maybe she could uh share the um, the update with everybody, with the rest of the board?
Sure, absolutely. So out of the committee meeting, when we talked about the signage, we were putting up directional signs for where our schools are, how to find central office and that sort of thing. Um, it came up um with, you know, we used to see signs that said weapon-free zone, drug-free zone. And Mr. Price, well, the committee really had asked for me to follow up to find out, is that us? Is that the township? Why aren't they around or why, why aren't they so prominent as they used to be? So I reached out to facilities director who reached out to the township just to confirm his, what he thought, and it's true. Um, it is a township ordinance type thing where they determine, you know, this is a school and the school-free zone starts and ends here, um, whether it's through statute or ordinance or whatever the case is. But it truly is a township thing. Um, and from that, the township then decides where to post those signs to make the community aware. Um, Mr. Price followed up. I, the committee also kind of said, uh, okay, well then, is that something we want to pursue and ask the township, hey, we'd like to see more prominent signs put up around their schools? Or do we leave it and just say that's the township and they put them where they see fit? Um, but it is up to them to notify, to put people on notice to say that these are drug-free, weapon-free zones. And then if people do um violate that, that's through them and their ticketing process or whatever happens. So that's the update. I guess, uh, Mr. Price, were you trying to just feel out to see if we had a consensus about that either way? Is that?
Yeah, I'd like to get a consensus. Uh, if the board wants to um pursue that and see that these signs are put up, um, you know, in the areas where it would be appropriate, if we should go through the process and, you know, um, implement this. I think that it is a good idea. Um, but it looks like it's something that we'd have to do in conjunction with the township. And it, it ultimately would be their, their cause to, to fund it and um determine where they would be posted. So I don't think um we would be um responsible to supply the signage, would we, Sandra?
No, that, that's correct. And we would ask them, you know, I mean, think if we get um very particular about, for example, on picturing Alder Avenue, for example, if we wanted it to be on all three sides, meaning on the backside of the building, the side of the building as well as the front of the building, that may be a little excessive. They may ask us um to help offset some of those costs. But if they have a standard rule in the township to say, hey, we posted along the boundary, like, let's just say it's 100 feet. I don't know what it is. But whatever the rule is, if they just decide to post on the extremities and not necessarily on our building, um, that may just meet their need and they may not be interested in entertaining us. Um, I can pursue it if you guys want me to, but that's pretty much where we ended it.
Okay, yeah. So that's pretty much, I think, what we're looking for is just to let the board know what we discussed and how we should move forward.
Good. Go ahead. Mrs. Bird is next.
Thank you. Um, it, it's a little bit off what you guys were talking about, but it made me think our signage of some of the schools, do they reflect like our anti-vaping policy? Because I noticed that we have like no tobacco use and because unfortunately vaping has uh become more popular. and because unfortunately vaping has become more popular amongst lots of people, I've noticed it happens on our grounds. So do our signs reflect that we, yes, include vaping in our anti-tobacco policies? And another question, real quickly. The finance committee meetings are at three o'clock, is that always at three o'clock? Or just right now?
Yeah, not normally. So it was not normally, we moved it from September eighth, which was the scheduled day. I did say with the first day of school, it'd be easier for me if we moved it. So we moved it up a week, and then the committee decided on that the time was going to be when it was. I think just because everybody was available.
Yeah.
It's not usually that time of day, no.
Okay, because I, like, if I ever want to, maybe?
No, that's not normal. Everybody could attend, yeah, everybody could attend at that time, so that's what was decided, yeah.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I can't answer the vaping policy, I'm not sure if we have to look into that, or if anybody knows. The last update I have is there is action, Mr. Castellano, on just the one item in finance today. Thank you.
Mr. Castellano, this is Barbara Salagi. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, Barbara.
Yes, we can hear you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Okay. I had asked a question when I submitted my questions about the quick connects in the high school? And what are they? Are they the lights that automatically come on that we're picking out? Are we replacing them?
Oh, I am remiss, I did not cover the board questions, so I'm just pulling them up real quick. I'm sorry about them, Mrs. Salagi.
Okay.
Every Friday, as we know traditionally, every Friday, the board gets our agenda, and they're able to review it and see if they have any questions. So they can have, we can discuss today and have conversations about it. So the connects are item number five-point-two-oh on the agenda, and I'm pulling up the backup for that as well, while I can pull up your questions at the same time.
I just don't have to, I can't even tell you how disconnected I feel here.
Sorry about that, this is not easy. But I felt your pain on the phone. So quick connects are basically, they're hardwiring into a bigger wire. To explain it in layman's terms, they're called quick connects, I don't know why. It's not something that's very quick or slow. It's just a matter of redoing bigger, if you can picture, a bigger, fatter wire going into little baby wires to every connection, whether it's a light bulb or a light fixture, or all that sort of things. And we found they were frayed in certain areas of the high school, so we're actually just replacing and improving them. So the quote that's attached has specific areas of where they're going to be working. This is something that was discussed during budget time. The price came in a little bit lower than expected, so that's exciting news. But part of the proposal on here says the estimated cost, including materials and labor, is a hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred. Actual cost would be in compliance with the Ed Data Service Agreement. The Ed Data Service Agreement has specific pricing when it comes to hourly rates for journeymen, a foreman, and an apprentice, and it talks about the certified payrolls that they have to submit to us, and everything is tied to that. So they can't just say, the project's a hundred eighty thousand, see you later. It really has to have a backup for it. If they're buying materials, it has to be the cost of their materials plus the Ed Data Service Agreement markup. So when they give all that together, it says, you know, your actual costs will be based on that. We are going to, we have contacted the vendor today to redo this proposal, where it'll read not to exceed one-eighty-five versus your estimate is one-eighty-five. Traditionally, that's how the proposals do come through. They've always just said estimate, because they can't really determine the actual. And sometimes they actually come in lower than what was expected. But I will, we did talk to them today, they have no problem changing their language. So when you see it on Friday, it will have an updated proposal that will read not to exceed. Other, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My question is then, will we still have the energy savings of when somebody walks into the room, the lights come on? And somebody walks out of the room, the lights go off? I mean, we paid a lot of money for that years ago, and I understand that the wires are frayed, but will we still be saving money based on the kind of fixtures that we have?
Absolutely. And actually, you'll be, I was going to report out at our next finance and ops meeting, but since you talk about savings and automation, we are working with a company, I think they're called Greenlight, that's the name of the vendor. They're working with us to, before September thirtieth, if we basically work on, work with them on getting us the estimates. We're looking at LED replacements district-wide at no cost to us, or very minimal cost, like eighteen dollars a building. The rebates are so high right now, and we're actually going to be automating the high school gym as part of our proposal. So I haven't told anybody that, because we're still getting the paperwork, but that's something we're looking at, just automating a lot more areas, bigger areas in the district. So yes, this reconnect is just the wiring that was already existing being replaced. It does not change the features of the items. And we are still looking at improving, doing more improvements district-wide.
Okay, and since I have the voice right now, somebody had asked me if we had applied for FEMA money. Would that be possible through, with the virus?
Absolutely, we are applying for FEMA money. So there's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand identified as of right now. I have to go through with a fine-tooth comb and see if I can find more that we can put in for. At this time, they're being very particular of what they're approving. For example, for staff preparation, excuse me, for student preparation, but not necessarily for staff. So if you say we purchased disposable masks for both staff and students, we have to identify which portion was going to be for students versus staffing, because there's things like that that they're not going to approve. But I'm working with our FEMA local representation to see how much we can actually get back. But we've identified about a hundred eighty thousand as of right now, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I'll just highlight some other questions that did come through for the finance agenda. Our sewage bill for, our quarterly sewage bill was identified as a question. And basically, just to report out, this quarter is more than half of the average overall that we usually pay for sewage, just because the buildings haven't been occupied, as seems, goes for our water bill for the month of August. When compared to summer months, it's right in line with what we do in the summer. Yes, buildings aren't occupied in the summer, but it's normal for summer, if I can say that. And I think that's it for personnel from those questions, there's other ones, though. All right, I think I'm done now, Mr. Castellano.
Thanks, and I just wanted to chime in that our board policies on prohibition of smoking do include all electronic devices. And I believe that's consistent with state law, and I'll confirm that with Amy, but I know for a fact our policies read that way.
It is consistent. Thank you so much, Mr. Castellano. I just was referring to the signage, that's what I was worrying about, not the policy itself, but our signage in case, because, like we were saying, we have so many visitors who use our facilities, so that they're aware of, you know, the rules.
And that's a good point, you know, and as this unfortunately becomes more popular, that raises the point of whether, you know, no-smoking signs or, you know, need to become no-smoking, no-vaping signs. But at least, you know, there's no question that our policy and law prohibits it, but signage is a good question. Anything else for finance and ops? So I'm going to move now. Now, we do have to take action on five-point-two. Am I correct on that, Ms. Anaya, five-point-two?
Yes, and I should have highlighted that more specifically. So we have some training going on, professional development and certifications for our special ed department. The training is happening virtually, as well as onsite in the beginning of October. But the actual virtual one, and because it costs money, starts next week, we have to have a board approved this week. So we threw that on for action for this agenda.
Okay. So then I'm going to ask for a motion for five-point-two, please.
This is Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
I'll check in it, Mrs. Sullivan.
All right, any discussion on five-point-two? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
That's a yes for me. We're going to move to curriculum. I do know that policy and curriculum did not meet this month because of our road back and back-to-school efforts. We will meet again in October, but I'll ask on the curriculum front if there are any updates, either from the chair or from administration.
So I have no updates. I will refer to Mr. Santilli to see if he has anything he would like to update.
No, likewise, no updates. And thank you for the support with the professional development for training that's going to be taking place for special education staff and administration.
Okay, thank you guys very much. And, yeah, I also want to thank our IT, all the work that they do, as I'm remembering all the people that I forgot. I thanked everyone on screen except for Mrs. Shoemaker, so thank you, Mrs. Shoemaker. And so now, we're going to move to personnel, and I'm going to ask Dr. Charlton if he has any updates for public session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just that we, after the summer, we are moving back to the normal protocol of work session and action during the regular sessions. So we won't be taking action tonight, but we will next Tuesday, the twenty-second. And the highlight of the last month was definitely welcoming all of our new staff and new staff orientation, teachers, paraprofessionals, educational service professionals, support staff. It's great to see them, so excited to be part of the EHT team. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, Dr. Charlton, normally we invite, you know, our new hires to board meetings, but we haven't been able to do that. But I encourage everyone to tune into the social media. Ms. Mullen has designed that welcome mat, and we are able to feature our new hires on the welcome mat. So just about to highlight that, thank you.
Yes, and I want to thank you as well for that. And I did have the opportunity to briefly join the call as we welcome staff back and say a welcome back and good luck to all of them. And it was certainly great to at least do that. Not our normal welcome back, but at least, you know, under our circumstances, it was nice. We're going to now move into policy, and again, policy did not meet because of our back-to-school efforts. But I'll just see if either the chair or our admin, Dr. Herry, has any points for us.
This is Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, and we do not, I don't have anything to add to the policy report, because we did not meet, but I am looking forward to working with the policy committee again next month, and with Dr. Herry.
As of today, it looks like we may have about ten policies to be addressed during our October sixth meeting. Partly the function for, you know, making up the lost time. But we will get that information out to the board approximately, I mean, to the policy committee approximately a week in advance. You'll have an opportunity to ask any questions or points of clarification, and then we'll look forward to meeting on Tuesday, October sixth.
I guess that's, so, Dr. Herry, ten, we'll get through it.
Very good. Thank you both very much. We're going to go now into old business. And we have for discussion this week the board goals for year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And basically, what we did was maintain the existing four goals, and we added a fifth goal for back-to-school, road back, and opening the district. And we left open the possibility that, once we climb that mountain, that we certainly may get together and decide on additional goals. But that is the goal right now. So I want to thank Mrs. Byrd for the extra effort she put in of compiling that and putting all those together. And so, you know, they're there for our discussion tonight. We'll vote on them next, next meeting, and I'll see if there's any discussion on that. All right, so hearing, hearing none on that, we're going to move next into communication.
Excuse me, can you hear me, Mr. Castellano?
Yeah, oh, yes, I can.
This is Marita, I have a, I have a comment on our board goals. Normally, we set our board goals, one of our first meetings in January, when we have a retreat, when we're all together and we can see how we handled the goals we already have, and then we institute more if we feel we need more. I personally don't believe we really need the COVID number five now, because we passed a resolution that the administrators can bypass some of our policies, like being in person in school a hundred and eighty days a year. Obviously, we're not doing that, we're not physically in the school. So we passed that to handle different COVID problems that come up, how we're handling the children, the safety measures that are in place. So I really don't see where we need number five right now. We can go over that when we have our next retreat, when we're all together and we can really evaluate how we have handled this year's goals. And let's see, there was one other thing I wanted to copy about that. Oh, and the other goals, thank you, Mrs. Byrd, for changing the language, but they all say the same thing that we already had there. There was nothing new that was instituted in there. So I am just really not fond of goal number, goal number five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. So I understand your point related to policy, but this is not a policy. This is a board goal. So do you not feel it's a goal of this board to successfully, safely open school and return our students back?
I think that that, Mr. Castellano, I think that that is up to our adminis, we provide these, our administrators with everything that they ask us to do. We're to provide them with things that they need. They're the ones that need to carry out, you know, the day-to-day operations. So I think that goal number five oversteps our board member right.
Oh, I, well, I would disagree. I think it's right in your statement, we provide, we set the stage for our, we enable, we enable administration to do what they need to do, whether it's passing policies, whether it's in terms of budgetary items, curricular items, whatever they may be. And our number one focus is, is back to, is back to school.
Mr. Castellano, this is Barbara Salagi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. In looking at number five, I think that it should really be, that should be a district goal, and not necessarily for the board. The board would be to provide the resources and the support to that goal of the, of the district. And I guess, I don't even, I don't understand the value in changing the wording either. What the wording is, is what the whole board had agreed to at the retreat when these were all formulated. So perhaps we could put them on hold until we do have a retreat?
Well, again, we've discussed this several times in public and have had consensus, and all of a sudden, I'm hearing something a little different. Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
I was just going to, or two things. Number one, well, maybe it's three things. I know that, you know, as a board member, we're supposed to provide, we provide the what and the district administration does the how. Like, they decide how they do it, and we decide what we, what we want as a board. I know we all want, make sure the road back is following as students are returned safely. Is, I think, I guess Mrs. Sullivan said about the hundred and eighty days. I just wanted to make sure that, I want to clarify, Dr. Herry, can you help me? With the hundred and eighty days, children still have to step to school and play, but it's cool, it's still open, it's still required to have the hundred and eighty days, but it's just virtually, so when the kids are in school, it counts, whether. So when the kids are in school, it counts, whether it's four and a half hours. And, and the other thing is, I don't have, I don't have number five to go right in front of me. Could someone, could someone read it out loud, number five, so we can hear it?
I will read it. It says, approved budget, the goal is to prioritize all academic health, safety, and emotional, social, emotional requirements as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic that will ensure the rigorous academic goals set forth in our district's strategic plan are achieved. These are all things that, this basically is saying that we are going to provide all these things. The activities under it says that approved budgetary accommodations for curricular modifications, professional development, technological access, expansion, additional resources to meet the district's compliance with the pandemic demands. These were, all of these things were covered on the policy that we said that they may, that the Administration could bring these things to us and tell us that they implemented them because it was in reference to the pandemic. So this, this goal is, I'm hoping this goal is not even going to be here by January. Hopefully, we'll be done. But I just think that we're overstepping our bounds as Board Members. Yes, we're to give them the what.
Yes.
And they provide it. And I think this goal talks about providing those things, which is not our job.
I think the goal, I think the goal identifies the what, and they're going to do the how, social, emotional learning. And we also, we do approve budgetary items to make that happen for the district and happen for the children. So I, I mean, I just, I agree to disagree there. I don't think that we're overstepping our bounds or micromanaging Administration.
Certainly not. We're ena, we're enabling our Administration.
How about we ask the Administration, do they feel that way?
Yeah, but we're not providing the.
I'm just asking a question. If the Administration, Dr. Grucci, Mrs. Santilli, they feel like the Board as a whole is trying to micromanage the back-to-school. That's it.
Okay, so we're not going to go, we're not going to go back and forth. We're going to raise our hands and be recognized. So I'm going to see if other Board Members have comment, and then I'll ask Administration.
Sorry about that, Mr. President.
We're all doing our best. I'm going to see if there are any, any other Board Member comment?
Pete, it's Lou. Just trying to, I'm trying to go through some other paperwork involved. Normally, yes, we did the established goals in the retreat in January, but I believe it was our, and it's suggested by the School Boards Association that we review the goals, I don't know, three or four times during the course of the year. And I thought that we, when we had that summer retreat that we also had, there was another time that we looked at goals and updated and revised and so forth. So I'm just, I'm just trying to think out loud how we came about a revision. I'm not too concerned with number five. I think maybe it's okay. It's not a big thing, but we should be reviewing our goals during the course of the year, not just once a year or twice a year. So my point, I guess, is that, is this the right time? I don't recall, you know, when we decided to make this, any changes. I think we did discuss it over the summer, but I don't remember exactly when. But I think normally, we did it in January, then maybe again in that summer retreat were the two definite times that we looked at Board Goals, maybe revisions, and made a decision as to what the new goals would be. So just a point I want to remind people how we did process the goals in the past.
Yeah, and then normally, if, if you look at that blue calendar that comes out from the School Boards Association, you know, now is the time when we set our goals for the year, and then we review them at our January Retreat. And that would be our plan to do that. Now, over the course of the past several Board Meetings, we've had a consensus decision that for this year, we would leave our four goals that we already have in place and add one overriding goal of getting us back to school safely. And that was our consensus of the Board and Administration. And, you know, now we seem to have some, some differing opinion, and I'm going to ask our Administration for their input.
Mr. Castellano, before you say that, we did not discuss changing goals before. At our last meeting, this, this policy was brought up, and the only thing we said, I know myself, I spoke and said, I did not know we were reviewing our Board Goals, and I would like time to look at them and read them. This is the first time we've revisited this since then. I don't see any problem at all why we can't postpone this again, maybe get together for a mini-retreat right now or a, or a phone conference. But this has not been discussed by the whole Board before.
Well, I, I beg to differ. We've discussed it several meetings in a row. But I'm going to see if there are any more Board comments, Board Member comments, any comments from Administration? If certainly.
Just a last minute thought. I, I believe that has been on the agenda for the last several meetings, on the item of Board Goals. So I do recall seeing that on our agendas.
It was on our agenda. It was on our agenda, and we, we put it on hold because nobody had discussed it.
I just wanted to say this, and I'm, and I'm leaving it being, but I just want to say that, this is Mrs. Floyd. It's a worldwide pandemic. I think that this goal has everything to do with, to be on the forefront of any Board of Education in this country is going to have that. I don't think, I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't know what it is. There's, I don't think there's any, like, I don't think there's any, and I will ask that question once again to the Administration, that they feel like this goal is something that, you know, you don't like is micromanaging them. I just think that, you know, it is important for, for the Board of Education to, the rollback to school involving the pandemic that we're in, and how this has such a great effect on our, our school district, that it would be part of something that we're making sure that we keep at the forefront. Not telling them how to do it, but making sure that we are providing the supports to it, the what. I don't think it's.
All right. Mr. President, this is Mr. Price, this is Mr. Price speaking on the telephone again. I just wanted to say I've been listening, and I think I would be in support of continuing the goal. I mean, we might want to take a look at it, make some adjustments on it and so on and so forth, but I think it is a matter of importance and a matter of interest for the Board to, to be involved with and pursue forward with. So that's my comments on it.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Byrd?
And I just wanted to add that I didn't write this independently, this fifth goal. I did it at the direction of the Board from our meeting. I took exactly what we discussed and put it into writing. The other goals I didn't amend by their content. I just cleaned up the language a little bit. So the intention wasn't to not, wasn't to change anything that we had agreed on as a Board. It was just to clean up the language because the way they were, the goals weren't measurable. And there's no point in having a goal that's not measurable. So I cleaned up the, cleaned it up so that we could see if we've accomplished our goals or not. So it wasn't, my intention was not to alter anything. It was just to make it a little bit more thorough. But if the direction of the Board is not that fifth goal, even though it was discussed and that was what we all agreed on, you know, I'm open to whatever the group wants to do, you know? But I think that for our district, having a goal that says, we're going to get our kids back, this pandemic isn't going to keep us down, what's the harm in that? And the executive order, or the reformat, sorry, the, the power that we granted to Dr. Grucci is not for the rest of the year. It's for as long as this emergency is in effect. So having this goal just reinforces that we support the district as a whole. And we were, we're going to help in any way we can to provide the resources so that our very qualified Administration can carry it out.
That's not what it says.
Like I said, I can clean up the language. If you have any suggestions, maybe we can do it together.
So if anyone has any language changes for next week, you know, I would ask that you please send them in. I didn't see anything in, in comments on the agenda. Shandra, did you? Pertaining to this, because that's normally, you know, comments on the agenda or agenda questions would come in. So if anyone has any suggested alternate language, that would be fine, but I, I think the language is, is fine the way it is. Go ahead, Mrs. Byrd.
I just think that I would, I would love to collaborate with anyone who has great suggestions. You know, we can do that this week. We can amend it, get it to everyone so they can review it over the weekend like we normally do. But, you know, not trying to put this aside because it's not important. I just feel like we're getting late, and we probably have lots of callers who want to express concerns about their experiences with virtual learning up to this point, or, you know, if they have any questions. So hopefully, Marita and Barb, we can work together, get this, you know, ironed out a little bit better so that you're more comfortable with it. But hopefully, Dr., Mr. Castellano, maybe we could move it along so that we can get to our callers.
Miss, Miss Byrd, talking about Board Goals, this is full Board discussion, not just a couple of people.
Yes, we, we've had that. And so I'm going to ask speakers to please ask to be recognized, all right? We're kind of getting away from form. And so at this point, I think we're going to move into our Communications. And I'm going to first ask Mrs. Byrd to give a legislative update. Mrs. Byrd and I attended the New Jersey School Boards Association Legislative Committee Meeting this past Saturday.
Yes, we attended it with New Jersey School Boards. They discussed amendments to the laws. And unfortunately, I don't have my full report because I left it on my desk at work. So I wasn't going to even attend this meeting because I had a migraine, so I apologize. I don't have it. I can give it next week. It's one of those weeks, everyone.
That's, that's fine. And I'll just, what I'll do is I'm just going to give two quick highlights.
Perfect.
For everyone to be aware of. We've all been hearing, obviously, you know, pandemic and back, back-to-school was a large part of the meeting. But other legislative items that were of note, that I think the Board should know about. We've been hearing for, I'm going to say, the better part of six months now that there has been this agreement reached on a new healthcare system for our educators. And that agreement was between the Governor, the NJEA, the Senate President, and the Assembly Speaker. Well, that's now been passed, and so there's a lot for us to study and explore. The idea was that it would be a win-win, a cost savings for all parties involved. We're certainly going to have to see if that's the case. There's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of homework and a lot of study involved. The second thing is the current proposed budget has cut school-based youth services. And that's a very important component in many districts, districts like ours, with a large population, with a, a large at-risk population especially. And so there's a concerted effort to get that reinstated in the budget. We have those folks in our high school, providing services to our students. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 students were served last year, and at a time like this, it's even more important. So we have a, a draft resolution, and what we're going to go about doing is, Mrs. Byrd is going to customize that and work that for Egg Harbor Township, and we'll pass that in favor of restoring those funds. And you, you're, you're right on cue, Lou, because I was going to call on you next to give us a report from the County Association Leadership Perspective.
Yeah, well, I happened to be at a meeting this morning of our local, our countywide officers who are planning the October Countywide Meeting. And that time, Ray Penny from School Boards clarified something regarding the topic he just addressed. He was saying that it was never in our budget at all when they cut the funding. It was from a totally different department. And what the state is doing right now with the Governor's approval is putting it back into the DOE budget so that they can reinstate the funding for the Division of Families and Youth Services. So that's the plan. They're hoping to reinstitute the funding. And he did say, because I mentioned that we were possibly going to have a resolution, he said, it helps, please go ahead, go forward with the resolution. Anything we can do to remind the state that how important that funding is, we should follow through on. So I thought you should know that there was that whole discrepancy where it wasn't actually in education funding or budgeting. It was in a whole different department, and it was cut. And they didn't even realize until all this, the, the discussion came up about, come, there's no money for like our teen center and our high school and so forth. And that's where it resolved, and now they're trying to fix it. So I thought that was good news. I don't know, do you want me to give a further report regarding, maybe I wait till later on?
Up to you.
Okay, well, the, the, a couple of things. The County Leadership Meeting was last week. Just a few highlights, what I did send it to Pete and the Administration regarding the, what I just said about the Division of Youth and Family Services. But they had a Department of Education person at the meeting, and she clarified some things about the whole testing going on in case you have a case in our school system. And again, it's, we've mentioned this before, it's up to the local Health Department as to how to follow through if there is a case of COVID in, in any of our schools, either student or adults. The whole decision as to whether or not to close a school, close a district and so forth is based, is a local decision based with the local Health Department. So that's, keep in mind, it's not a statewide decision. It's all a local decision if that ever happens around here. Hopefully, we don't have that happen. Let's see, another point that they made, oh, the digital divide, they're working on trying to have funding so that we have the money, so that the districts have the funding to provide more availability of materials, supplies, instruments and so forth. So there is some work on having the funding for, so that we do, we can decrease the divide amongst the different districts in the state. Big question, is state standardized testing? What are we going to do this upcoming year? Guess what they're saying? We don't want to discuss it right now. This is not important to us right now. We just want to get over the opening of schools and that whole situation we're in, which is fine, but it's on their agenda, but they're not doing anything about state testing at this time. So I guess we're not supposed to worry about it until they come up with it. Teacher evaluation, they're still saying that there needs adjustment on that. It's not clear again. They're having discussions at the state level. So that's some of the highlights of that. Then, as I mentioned, our County Officers met with the State School Boards Association this morning to plan for our meeting on October 15th. What it's going to be is, I don't know if you, people know Amy Hassa from Hamilton Township School District. She's co-chairing a, or she is chairing a ad hoc committee on mental health. And she's very much involved with mental health programs and training. And we have asked her to present about a 10-minute report at the County Meeting as to what the State Association is doing. And there's quite a lot going on under her committee, and that's good news regarding the whole situation of what's happening with mental health for, for our students. And then the other remaining of the meeting is a general discussion. We want to have all the 23 districts in the, in the county have an opportunity to ask questions, make comments, bring it up to the Association. And Amy Haupt doesn't know this yet, but she or Will Dodeo are going to be asked to attend that meeting. Ray Pitti is going to make the contact, and so that there is an attorney at the meeting so that they can answer some of the questions that may come up from the different districts. Waymouth Township, 120 students have been able to have in school, but they couldn't open because of other concerns. So they, they have different discussions. I think they have transportation concerns with their busing because they're, the regional is running their busing. So they have different concerns than our 7,300 kids through our large districts. So we want to hear the different county discussions or different districts in the state, in our county, and hopefully provide some answers, and maybe we will. provide some answers and maybe we will have a better attendance even of course at that meeting and then the last point is I think we have already done this as a district to register for the School Boards Association Virtual Convention and at the end of October the three days uh as you all have heard and I'll remind everybody when once we register it's a savings of money this year and more people will be uh 25 people can attend the convention and all of the programs are being recorded so that anytime for one year after the conference you can go back and go to any program you'd like to and get credit for making having attendance and catch up on the different programs which certainly is not the way we do it when we're in person because you go to one program and you miss all the other discussions so this is I think a nice benefit and I think Shandra probably has already made our registration but if not now's the time to do it so that all of us can have the opportunity to gain the training from the state and all the programs that they have thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak I appreciate it.
Absolutely, we thank you as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Castellano one addition to what uh Lou Mr. De La Barca just said your mandatory mandatory training must be done live you cannot do your mandatory training another day if you want to get credit for it so if you're still have not done your mandatory training for the year you have to watch that as it is happening live.
Okay, thank you very much for that as well uh we're now gonna move to uh public comment um and if we all remember our rules for public comment um up to uh three minutes please remember we uh uh are going to ask that you please give your name and address for the record uh we cannot speak about personnel or litigation we try our best to answer questions if it turns out that it's a complicated question uh it may be necessary for one of our uh administrative staff to get back to you.
Amber at Elm Place 6512 Melrose in North Township um I just wanted to take a moment first and foremost uh the first day of practice at the high school was impressive athletic trainer nurses coaches were well-oiled machine as they navigated the students to the lines and onto the field the safety measures insured um were much appreciated so I just wanted to say great job and um I wanted to move into um slide presentation for tonight I have two questions concerning the turf project um could you please clarify the cost analysis slide the district has already converted from grass to turf and judging by the last slide um replacement of the turf with turf is the recommendation um it is the cost analysis slide to um point out how cost effective is um over the past 11 years because converting back to grass should not be an option for many reasons um the next uh question I had was the um next step slide what consists of three separate votes correct one being the transfer funds the other the agreement to replace the turf with turf and then lastly the contract agreement to use the turf field um I just wanted to also ask if these would these actions would be found under the finance section in the September 22 agenda in closing I just wanted to take the opportunity to commend this board for their commitment to pass conversations three years ago the board spent many nights hosting a strategic planning event that allows the community voice to be heard items such as implementing school day kindergarten school safety and uh turf upgrades were at the top of the list I'm impressed that this board is taking initiative and opportunity to make good on those conversations by seeing projects like safety renovations school day kindergarten now turf upgrades um through I appreciate your efforts and hope that this turf upgrade is well received by the community through these tough times it's nice to see that everyone's working together and staying positive um we should be here for the students and um have their best interests um we're looking forward to um all yes votes next week and uh and what's gonna happen with the turf in the spring um just real quick touching on um the goals that you guys talked about tonight um I know there's a lot of conversations typically um what I remember was um we usually started goals the conversation in January we usually had them set at a summer retreat I know because I was always in Ohio when I got the call about the board goals so um just kind of putting a little bit out there for everyone um maybe jog some memories um but so yes we do usually start in January I think everyone kind of was correct on that um just to talk about some of the language um in the goal number five um I guess maybe this might help um vision and values um is what you should really kind of hone in on um you know never select you know um to be an educational expert and then you know the the school board just to make clear that you know the students aren't left without um instruction and things to that nature by supporting the administration in the um in like these uh boys that just you know kind of like you know making sure that you guys stick with your roles what and how and things to that nature I think you guys have great conversation great dialects going on um you know just you know come together and just really create some great goals and um so change the other four I think that that's healthy I think that having the same goals year after year is not healthy you don't want to get stagnant so I just wanted to encourage you guys all to just you know keep that positive vibe going and keep going and you're doing great so thank you guys so much we've had a great learning experience here at the Elm Place House so thanks for all you guys for doing bye.
Thank you very much Amber um appreciate your insight and uh yes that you know that is our normal goal process of course this was a little different year uh year like no other and so you know we did make a few adjustments there uh and I'm gonna ask um either uh Kim Phil or Shandra uh a couple of those turf things just to uh fill Amber in uh based on her questioning.
So I can comment on the cost analysis piece um that is without ripping out the current underlayments of the current track that's just the maintenance annually um so it would actually be more if we decided to truly convert to grass um as far as action the two action items on next agenda would be under finance it would be the capital reserve withdrawal for the project as well as awarding the contractor so it would be two not three and those are my pieces.
Okay, all right, very good uh anything else on that one and we'll we'll thank Amber again uh for uh your support and we're going to move on.
I didn't realize I was on mute did you guys hear any of that Jennifer Henderson from Seven Marty Lane stated um that last time we had a meeting we said we administration said we can meet students from the nose up that still be happening I didn't realize I was on mute as she was speaking and that was her only comment so you can respond and she's already off line sorry about that.
I'm sorry I didn't hear I just heard nose up we can meet students from the nose up.
Uh in the previous meeting we had talked about students meeting staff she called it in a meeting from the nose up you know with the mask on she asked if that was still gonna be happening.
I think she might be referring to the meet and greet uh there were some ideas for uh staff to to be at the meet and greets I know at the high school there was some staff there um and it's something that we talked about but didn't put in place um because of social distancing at at you know issues and health and safety regs at that time um but you know I don't know Steve if we talked to anyone regarding that when you were playing with logistics of everything but it it hasn't been discussed in at my level recently so.
You ready for the next comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right you are live streaming go ahead uh with your name and address please.
I'm Elizabeth Valentina Chobanova I live at 504 New Court in the township New Jersey I'm a working mom I have three kids of ages five to seven and I have a couple of things to ask for the board to consider for the virtual schooling number one uh self-learning Mondays self-learning Monday might work for older kids but it doesn't work for my five-year-old my five-year-old child cannot read instructions my five-year-old child doesn't know how to use my my five-year-old child needs assistance on Mondays can you please come up with alternative options for working parents and my um second thing that I want to bring up is the schedule that was implemented by the school the schedule was not made by a human for humans no one can follow the times that are specified in the schedule um uh can you please can you please adjust the schedule and also because my kid being so small and they didn't learn the times in school they cannot follow these times so that will be it thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and um I I guess take you know uh just taking it in order you know we understand that virtual learning is not perfect and even when we uh return to our hybrid there will still be a virtual component and we understand there are limitations there and and we hear you um however we're in a situation where we have to balance education and health safety and welfare and it it's a constant balancing act um and we're doing our best with that and I'm gonna ask uh Doc if you have anything on the schedule question.
Um first of all I thank you for that clarification um and and support um my my only um my first suggestion would be um to call the building principals and express your concern because as I said in the beginning um of my opening of my update we are here to help and we have fielded um phone calls we have fielded emails we have um fielded in-person um folks that have had difficulties and frustrations and um we've we've had conversation and provided assistance so I encourage you to reach out to anyone and everyone um that's having frustrations that haven't heard from us yet um to call and you know we we will do our best to assist you um in terms of um I I I heard some about a five-year-old seven-year-old um we do have our talent program uh that is operating uh the working parent piece um so the talent program um takes children into our buildings and assists them with learning their schedule um assists them with the virtual learning experience so we do offer uh that service to our parents so but again I encourage parents to call the building principals um and you know we we are here to support parents and we're here to support the building principals with any concerns that that are brought to them.
Yes, thank you very much uh Dr. Guccio I I had wanted to mention the talents as well so thanks uh thanks uh for reminding me and uh we'll go to our and thank you for that call and we'll go to our next one.
Okay, you are now live streaming name and address please.
Uh Kristy Flynn 5 Lewis Drive I just want to first start off by saying that the teachers have been fantastic so far um my daughter is in second grade over at play ball they have been absolutely amazing I zero complaints um with that being said something did happen today that made uh my daughter very upset uh there was a parent in the background that started screaming yelling um really attacking the teacher they handled it beautifully uh they were so professional so calm much better than I would have taken it um but my question is is there anything in place any type of protection any type of policy something that can not only protect the teachers but the students from having to witness this there was you know 20 so or so uh second graders that witnessed this whole thing but that's it thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for the uh the compliments and um that's a very unfortunate uh episode that that took place and I guess I would ask um if if you get in touch with the uh superintendent tomorrow and let's look at that a little closer and see what we can do about that um particular situation and then in in a general sense what we may be able to do.
Okay, we ready for our next caller where's okay you are live streaming go ahead with your name and address please.
Good evening my name is Terry Alabarda 206 Westwood Bird Egg Harbor Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Um I want to start by saying that um I have children in the middle school and the high school and the schedule right now is great as they have it um it's not too much it's not too long of a day and the kids are still able to do their um their independent work after they're done um but I heard from a lot of my friends that have children in the elementary school and I know from being a teacher myself in a different district that the day is a little bit long for the children and um I understand that the the goal was to to try to mimic the students going to school but um I think that might be something that needs to be looked at and I also wanted to um say Bravo for um bringing up the fact that that the track in the field that has to be changed because it is so important for our our area to be able to host the big events and have more people come in after COVID's done and right now is the right time to have it done because we can't have any of that and the field's already closed so I'm hoping that you do approve the new field and track at the high school because it'll be great to be able I I graduated from Egg Harbor Township High School many years ago and I I had my graduation on that field and I know in four years when my daughter graduates I want her to graduate on that field too so it's really important to get that done and also to keep our um our children safe when they're playing sports. So it's really important to get that done and also to keep our, our children safe when they're playing sports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. We appreciate that. Saved by the bell.
Yeah. So it had been up for over thirty seconds and we have a call now, never mind. Okay, you are live streaming. Go ahead with your name and address, please.
My name is Stephanie Legreca and I'm at one eighteen Leo Avenue. I have a five-year-old who's in the kindergarten with the remote learning. The issue I'm having is she's staring at a screen for five hours. Her teacher had an emergency, so she was merged with another class. She went two days before her name was ever called to even participate. So two days, no interaction at a five-year-old level. She was watching school, not participating in school. And I get that the remote, the remote learning is very difficult for children of this age and for the teachers and even anybody dealing with it. I mean, watching this board meeting, you guys have had difficulties. So a five-year-old having to learn how to mute and unmute where they have to use the mouse and watch a screen for five hours and then come home with homework. I've had nothing but behavior problems. She cries every day that she wants the computer to break. How are we going to address this for the five-year-olds? Is there a way to make the day shorter, to make something more interactive? Because a class of twenty-five kids and a kid not even getting to interact with their teacher, isn't fair. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment and we hear you. We understand. You know, and as, as I said before, we know that remote learning is less than perfect. And what we've had to do is balance health, safety and welfare, not only of students, but of staff, teachers, everyone in the building, as well as their loved ones. And balance that against education. We've literally had to balance health against education. And we've, we've done the best that we can do. Now that being said, as, as we had mentioned earlier, there's always room for improvement. Our Talons program is available and I'll let Doc just expand on that again if there's anything else.
No, you hit it. We do have the Talons program. I just want to emphasize that the kindergarten over the last week or so has gone through an assessment process. And the class could be setting up and running this week. I encourage, you know, folks who are having difficulty to contact the building principals to have a call, put a call into the teacher and express your concerns. I will say feedback makes us better at what we do. So your concerns are taken very seriously. And we always try to make those improvements. So again, the quickest and most efficient way to resolve any issues that you have would be to go through the chain of command, have a discussion with the teacher, have a discussion with the building principal or the supervisor of that area.
Yep, exactly. So again, we do hear you. We hear you. What was that bell before?
It was somebody's phone dinging, I'm sure.
Oh, okay. Well, I hope an angel got their wings.
Yeah. So it just made it to the live stream, so we'll wait another thirty seconds with it on display. Okay, Mr. Castellano, it's been up for thirty seconds, no callers. Nobody's been on hold, so you are meeting.
Okay, very good. So now I'm going to see if there are board member comments and I'm going to go in order to do that. And I'm going to go right alphabetically and I'm going to see if Mr. Delibarca has anything.
No, thank you, Pete. I did speak earlier and look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Very good and we appreciate your input. Mr. Ellis, I don't know if Mr. Ellis is present.
Mr. Ellis did not make it to the regular meeting after executive session.
Okay, then I will ask Ms. Gilbert Floyd if you have anything for us this evening.
I just wanted to say that we had a very, I think, very healthy conversation this evening, which is part of the purpose of work sessions. So I was glad to be a part of that. And I just wanted to say that my children both started, one at Miller and one at Fernwood with the virtual remote learning. And I've been in contact with teachers. They were out there handing out materials. I mean, it was, it's, it's been, I know it's only been, you know, five days, six days now, I think. But I think we're off to a good start, not perfect, but nothing is. But I think that we're off to an amazing start. And they've been in contact, they call, they send messages. They, they, my, my children's teachers have been, been available when needed. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I know that we'll be probably talking, you know, until we get back in the schools. I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I just wanted to say when Ms. Alabarda called Terry and she said that she graduated from the high school many, many years ago, I just want to say it wasn't many, many years ago. Nineteen ninety-three wasn't that, that far away. We graduated together in nineteen ninety-three. So we're not that, we're not that old, Ms. Alabarda. That's what I wanted to say on a lighter note for a night that was pretty median, you know. But that's what makes a good board.
We, we thank you for that. And I'm going to see if Mr. Price has anything for us this evening.
Yes, I do, Mr. President. This is Mr. Price. And just a couple of quick comments. First, I want to say thank you to everybody for your patience tonight with some of these technology glitches that we're having here. And I wholeheartedly understand that there are students out there that are obviously, and parents, experiencing the same difficulties. This is technology. I don't think any of us want to be in this situation, but we're trying to do the best that we can to get through this. And together, that's, we will get through it. And I would just like to emphasize that help is out there. I mean, you need to reach out, like Dr. Gruccio said, call your school principals. I know I've received a couple of situations where people needed additional help. And I worked with Dr. Gruccio and we resolved the issues. And so, you know, we don't know, we don't know what your circumstances are unless you reach out. So it's important that you do and go through the procedures. And if you do have any difficulties, I can assure you that Dr. Gruccio will come up with a solution because we are here to help. And I know that she did pretty much put out the guidelines on what you need to do if you do need additional help. So that's about it. And again, hopefully we can get these technology issues straightened out right here on the board and we'll see everybody next week. So that's my comments for tonight. This is Mr. Price. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, I have two comments to make. One is from someone who texted me earlier today and I didn't get a chance to send it in. And it pertains to who is following up on the health screenings that the parents are doing. One parent called, I guess, called or contacted the teacher today and, you know, basically said, I didn't, you know, have anything to fill out yesterday. So how do I let you know how my child is doing? So, and I didn't have the answer for that. So if somebody could address that sometime soon. And my second is that I am going to formally request that I am going to go into, I'm asking to go into the office next Tuesday and use the computers for our virtual meeting next week because I do not feel that I'm even in this meeting because I can't see or hear anybody. So that, that's my second comment. Thank you.
Go ahead, Doc. Thank you. Did you have something? Obviously, we would want to have that parent contact their, their school.
I believe there is a question on the, on the health check. So I know Mr. Santilli worked on the, the operational plan. And I know he and I spoke today about health checks and the data that's been collected and how it's being monitored. So, but Steve shared with, he shared with me.
So part of the phase one plan was, of course, to, you know, put in a health check at six-thirty every morning. We have a text message and email that goes out to parents. This is a new procedure for parents that are participating in in-person learning. So in day two, of course, we're still closely monitoring. Myself and our data specialist and IT have worked together to compile that data very quickly, first thing in the morning. And it's, it's really just kind of teaching a new process for, for parents at home to make sure that they are adhering to completing that Google form that goes out. The health check is, is, you know, it's not a lengthy form to fill out, but it's one that, you know, is required for, for students coming in for in-person. But also we have a responsibility under policy sixteen forty-eight to continue to monitor, you know, for symptoms of students and as well as staff during the course of the day. So we've been pretty transparent, in my opinion, in regards to making sure that the staff, you know, throughout participating in in-person learning certainly know and have what the parents have in terms of what those symptoms are. There are different guidelines, you know, that Dr. Petrucci, our school physician, has also provided for us, which has been aligned to, of course, the CDC and other best practices that are out there. And, and, you know, this, for the sake of time, you know, there's, there's certain symptoms that are a little bit more severe. So if you have one of these particular symptoms, for instance, in one checklist, you would be required to stay home and the device would be to follow up with your doctor. If you have two symptoms in a particular checklist, maybe they're not as severe of a symptom. Then, of course, the guidance is the same thing. Please keep your child home and, and call them out for the day and follow up with your healthcare provider. And of course, fever being one of the most prominent, hundred point four or higher. So that is, is something we closely monitor. And one of the things that we've done is anybody that is forgetting to complete that, for instance, or isn't timely in the completion of that health check, we immediately reach back out and they get not just a text and email, but also a call reminding them. And we'll continue to do that. And I'm hoping that, you know, over the next few days, we continue to, you know, reinforce and teach this new practice for, for those parents participating in in-person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Steve. And Mrs. Summer, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do. First, I wanted to start off by thanking all of the teachers. I know how hard that they are working. It's very, very difficult teaching virtually. So I just wanted to thank them. They're doing a great job. Just a question, a couple of questions, actually. So I've been hearing from the public and also seeing it with my own kids. I know that we want to, you know, we're trying to mirror the, in the schedule that the students are doing virtually as in-school. But is there a way to somehow maybe incorporate lengthier breaks in between subjects? I know that, you know, it's just a long time sitting on these meets for the, it's a long time for the teachers. It's a long time for the students. I know that there's like five-minute breaks in between. Sometimes teachers will go over, you know, it's just not a lot of time for the students to just even get up and stretch and walk around and things like that. So that was my first question. My second question was, is there a way to maybe next week provide us with? I know that, you know, with having full-day kindergarten, we talked about how the numbers in each of the classes would go up a little bit, kind of just to see those numbers and also compare the numbers for, through, for grade levels throughout the different schools and just make sure that, you know, there's consistency within the schools and within the number of children in each grade level. And then my third question is, will there, will there be any type of virtual back-to-school night?
Thank you, all three for Doc.
Okay, well, the first one, lengthier breaks. I mean, that's something that, you know, we can discuss after I get an assessment after a couple of weeks or so with the virtual learning schedules in place. We did build those schedules, as you stated, similar to the building schedules where in fact the students have five minutes to change classes and move on to the next. So right now, what I will do is making sure that the teachers are completing and finishing the classes on time so the students have that full five minutes to get up and walk, walk around and, and stretch. So that, that I could do first, but then, you know, I, I need some time to assess the overall. Regarding kindergarten numbers, I believe we do have a ballpark idea of what those numbers are because Mr. Santilli and I just spoke about that the other day as well. So Steve, if you have them, you know, I'll give you a second to share. And regarding the virtual back-to-school nights, good question. That has been a discussion in our administrative meetings. I put them on hold for the month of September. And we were going to revisit in our October meeting to see if we want to do a virtual back-to-school night or wait until kids, if kids, you know, get physically get back in school, if we're able to manage something. So I put that out there for the administrators to think about and come up with some innovative ideas. And I will surely be reporting to the board what the result is on that when we have the answer. So Mr. Santilli, go ahead.
Oh, I was just trying to say thank you. No, but before Steve gives us the numbers, not just kindergarten numbers, but I think, you know, throughout all of the elementary school grade levels, just to make sure that there is that consistency and, and, you know, equity amongst how many kids are in each class.
So Mr. Santilli can also explain how we scheduled and what it is based on equity in, in many areas through academically, socially, behaviorally. So Steve, you can just touch on that a little bit and the data collection and the process that, you know, our data analysis person went through to disaggregate the data and then how that was presented through Ms. Moss. um, you know, our data analysis person went through to disaggregate the data and then how that was presented through Ms. Moss to the teachers, um, based on, uh, building their class, classrooms.
Absolutely, Dr. Grusio. Um, so first I'll just start straightforward with the numbers. I pulled up a spreadsheet. It's the most up-to-date that I have, um, right now for kindergarten. Um, ultimately for SWIFT, we have, um, approximately, these are approximate numbers per class size. Um, thirteen, uh, in, in SWIFT, uh, eighteen in Slay Ball and seventeen in Davenport. Those are approximate numbers, uh, as of today. Uh, as you know, um, there has been, um, a lot of fluctuation whether, um, this enrollment's out or also enrollments in. Um, and a lot of that had to do with, um, you know, our, our pivot or shift from hybrid to remote and, and then also, of course, you know, some decisions that we made recently for phase one. Um, in terms of what Dr. Grusio is referencing and, and also Miss Summer to answer your question, I will certainly be taking a look at the other class, class sizes. I'll, I'll take a look at that. Um, they have, you know, I'm sure changed slightly based off of the data that we, um, you know, put into place initially. Uh, we take a look at, of course, a lot of different benchmarks. I know we have those conversations quite often in curriculum, uh, committee. Of course, there was no NJSLA scores this year, uh, to utilize. However, we utilize different benchmarks. We compiled that data. Uh, and of course a lot, we've done tremendous work with, uh, with RTI and the RTI process. So we didn't want to lose sight of that. Um, so with that being said, the data is compiled and, and we make determinations of if a student would be a tier one, tier two, or tier three student. So tier three, as you recall, would be receiving the most interventions. Uh, we want to make sure that we, of course, have, uh, those heterogeneous classes, um, throughout the district, uh, and then especially at the elementary level and spread out that way. Um, so our focus this year expanded and it was really, uh, uh, K to eight expansion in regards to that RTI process. Um, one of the things that we did and our data, uh, specialists had worked with us on was not just focusing on tier one, two, and three, but then going even further because of our conversations, uh, on cultural competencies, um, and, and really making, you know, a concerted effort to make sure we recognize that and put it into effect. So we also broke it down based off of, um, making sure that we spread out students equally in those heterogeneous classes based on gender and also race. Um, and then that information was, um, provided to each of the buildings, um, and ultimately their class lists for the most part, um, were, were pretty much, um, developed for them based off of that information and that data. Um, again, um, there could have been some variations here and there because of course at that point then we have other considerations. Um, when we're, we're, we're looking at numbers like that on paper, um, there are other considerations more from the social emotional aspect and of course conversations with administration and guidance. Um, sometimes we know that students, um, may not work, um, let's say necessarily well together. Um, and so we have to make some changes based off of those lists initially. Um, so they may have done that at the building level. And then of course, you know, like I had mentioned earlier, the simple fact that, uh, there could have been changes based off of, uh, you know, students that have, uh, either left the district or even students that have come in since, um, that we're compiling data for now.
So, um, I guess, once we're back in the building, we may want to revisit, you know, just some of those numbers because I know that while, you know, thirteen in kindergarten class at one school, eighteen in another, while you think to yourself, that's only five students, if you ask any kindergarten, first grade teacher, a second grade teacher in those lower elementary grade levels, that's a huge difference. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
Yes, we've had, um, we've had, I guess, ebbs and flows in regards to, um, those numbers. Something that we experienced last year, for instance, was, uh, I think the ebbs and flows last year happened to be actually in Davenport. Um, and a lot of that has to do with how our lines are struck. And of course, you know, when the student enrolls, um, they're going to be placed, especially, you know, starting in kindergarten, they're going to be placed in their home school. Um, we have had to make adjustments in the past to accommodate for that. Um, right now, as you know, um, you know, really what it comes down to is, is we are in unique times, but, but these are things that we're going to keep a close pulse on, especially when we start to get ready to shift back to, um, either hybrid or in-person learning. You know, all those things, like I said, homeschool, busing, things like that come into effect. So, uh, I don't, don't disagree with you at all. Um, five is, is, may not seem like a lot to the average person, but, but to all of us in education, um, it does make a difference. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll certainly take that into account.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Um, Mrs. Salagi?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. It, it's hard, it's really hard doing it like this. Um, first, I, I guess I, I want to express that I, I believe that the administration and the teachers and the students are, are really doing their own best to acclimate to this, uh, I guess, virtual situation. But I know that there's a lot of teachers, there's support staff, and there's students that want to be back in the buildings. And as a board member, I also feel disconnected and I, tonight I really feel frustrated, uh, having to meet like this. Um, I would request that those that wish to meet in-person do so. And others can do whatever, whatever they want to do. I mean, uh, to me, I need to be in-person. I, I just, I can't, I, I just can't do it like this anymore. And, um, Mr. Ellis left because he was frustrated with his laptop. And, um, I guess if we're going to take another vote on doing live meetings or not, the vote that we took in closed session, he said he wanted live. And I would hope that you would recognize that and use that, um, when you take another poll. Um, also I had submitted a question as to how many students have transferred out since we started, uh, this virtual learning. And, um, I did not get an answer. I got an answer, but I'm, I really didn't understand. And, um, if somebody could give me a number of how many went out and how many came in, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. So I think, uh, Doc, you can get that number. Uh, I guess that was a, a, an agenda question.
It was. And Chandra, could you pull up the, the answer? And I'm looking at Mr. Santilli because we have, he had, he oversees registration. Um, I thought we answered it, but maybe, you know, you can explain that?
Yeah, I have, I have the data here and Chandra, feel free to jump in too. But I'm, I'm just looking at the chart that we provided and if there's further detail, Miss Salagi, that you, that you desire, we can certainly, um, you know, get that information. But, um, you know, we did a three-year comparison. So for instance, um, as of, uh, today, um, if you take a look at homeschool numbers, so we, we did eighteen, nineteen through, of course, as of today. So, uh, in terms of homeschool students, I'll start there. In eighteen, nineteen, there were twenty-eight. In, uh, nineteen, twenty, there were twenty-seven homeschool students. And of course, uh, now, uh, in twenty, uh, twenty-one, thank you, Chandra, um, for presenting that. Um, so now in twenty twenty-one, there were thirty-four, um, students as of, as of today. Um, so of course, uh, you know, take a look, there's also choice charter and non-public numbers, um, and they go down and, and share, you know, show a comparison from year to year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and as I said, if there's anything else you want to, you know, you want us to provide any further information, just sort of stuff.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Mrs. Byrd?
Um, thank you. Uh, I do have a couple of things. I, first of all, thank you for taking on for the team, Mr. Castellano with the legislative report. I'm sorry I left it on my desk. I'm not feeling great, so I apologize. Um, but the track and field, I have a lot of concerns on this. Not that it is not important, not that our, um, track and field is not a area to be proud of for, you know, for our residents, for our schools. But I'm not sure if right now is the best time to expend that kind of money when we have aging buildings. We have broadband issues. We don't have one-to-one technology. Um, in two thousand eight, we paid one point seven five. It lasted twelve years. So that's like a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year if you average it out. Um, and a grass field from the slides was fifty-two thousand five hundred a year. It would take us thirty-three years of a grass field to pay for the, um, turf. And not that I don't think turf is desirable, it absolutely is. However, we are in times that, you know, it could get worse. It could get worse. And why can't we wait one more year and maybe upgrade some of our building facilities that are aging or use that money to come up with something because we can s- maybe to spread out our kids more, have more space or buy land. I don't know, do something. This just doesn't seem like to me the right time to be using taxpayer money to fix our turf when the same taxpayers, um, don't have technology for each kid in their family. And we're virtual. So I know that comes from a different bucket, the technology money, but I'm just really concerned about spending that money. We just instigated full, or initiated full-day kindergarten, um, which was huge. I just, I, I disagree with this. You know, I disagree with it, um, at, with this kind of expense this year. And my other comment was to thank parents, uh, for calling in and expressing their gratitude as well as some of their concerns. Like, uh, it was mentioned earlier, you know, it's, it's hard to fix something when you don't know what's wrong. So it's hard, you know, and I, as a teacher myself, this is really, really difficult. And I know, um, I would want to hear from my parents if, you know, they were struggling or their, their children were upset because the last thing a kindergarten teacher wants to do is upset a little five-year-old. So, um, just be patient. We're all working through this together. Um, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd, very much. And, uh, you know, my, uh, only closing thought again is, is to thank everyone and just, just to reemphasize how important it is for us to really make the effort to work together now. Um, there, there is one, there is one job now, and that's getting us back. Uh, we open school, um, and now to tradition, uh, to, to transition us back first to a hybrid and hopefully sooner rather than later to fully in-person. Um, getting us back, that's job one. And we all really have to make an extra effort to work together. Um, and so that's why, uh, you know, I felt and, uh, still believe that is job one. And that's why it needs to be a district, a board goal, a district goal, uh, that is, that is job one for us. And so, you know, uh, with that, we have one, uh, piece of business. We're going to poll the board in terms of what our next meeting will be. Um, I understand everyone has a lot of different opinions on it. Um, we've made our decisions about whether to have in-person or uh, virtual meetings by majority rule each time. And, uh, so I will just start with my, my view of it. And that is, uh, I will be voting for one more virtual meeting next Tuesday. Um, and then I'm going to be in favor of returning to in-person for October. I, I think that's a logical time to start because, uh, the majority of our students and staff will be beginning at some time, uh, later in the month of October. So again, it, it's up to each board member, but what I'm going to do is, um, um, now I'm going to, uh, poll. I'm going to have, before we go to any more, there's a, before we go to any more comment, I'm going to have, that, that's just my own view, but I'm going to have Chandra poll the board, um, on what they want to do for, for next, go, for next.
Before we poll the board, is what, um, Mrs. Galagi suggested, is that an option that we can consider where those who want to be in-person because they're, um, you know, struggling maybe or having issues with the technology, is that an option for some to choose to be in-person board-wise and some who are not comfortable be virtual? Is that an option we can consider in this straw vote?
Well, that's, so I'm going to back up a little bit. We, um, first of all, we have to have a quorum in one place. All right. So, uh, and the last time we had an in-person meeting, we did that. Um, and so we had a quorum in-person, um, and, and a few called, uh, you know, participated virtually. The executive orders still allow us to do that, but we do have to have a, you know, a quorum in one place. Um, so, uh, you know, that's why, you know, the, the need, the need for a vote for a majority rule. Majority, I, I don't know of any, any fairer way to do it than that.
So the straw poll is specifically for next Tuesday?
Is for next Tuesday. And I was just expressing my view.
Okay.
Just, you know, in, in, in the interest of full transparency, that my view is we go one more week virtual and then for October, uh, my vote will be for in-person at that point. Just for transparency, so you know where I'm, where I'm coming from. But our, our poll will be for next week. I, I appreciate Mr. Ellis had, had views, but, and, and had, maybe had some issues. You know, but we can only poll board members who are, you know, present.
Excuse me, Mr. Oh. Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
And, and you said in the, in the, um, effort to be transparent and I'm, I don't know if we can even, I don't think we, I don't know if we can discuss it or not, but I just needed to be made clear that there, there's, there were situations that happened that caused some, maybe some hesitation about meeting in-person, you know, um. And I don't know if that's something that can be shared or not shared, but I think in the spirit of transparency, you know, it's not just like, oh, we just, we just don't want to meet in-person. I think, um, there was some, you know, underlying circumstances that took place that when we did meet in-person, um, and, you know, just involving exposure to different areas that are hotspots outside of New Jersey that, that played a part in it. So I just want to put that out there too. Cause I think, you know, we just got to make sure it's understood.
Well, I hear what you're saying, Domenica, and, and I'll, I'll take that one head-on. So, uh, uh, when I referred to transparency, what, what I was referring to was just where I'm coming from and how I intend to, you know, vote going forward. But your, what you're referring to is also another valid aspect of what happened. And, uh, we did, a majority of us did vote to meet in-person, uh, in August, and we did meet in-person. And the fact of the matter is, not all board members followed safety protocols. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. And I'm not being, trying to be, starting, I'm just saying, I think that we, sometimes we, we talk around stuff and, you know, people say, well, why, why, why wouldn't you want to meet in-person? There's other circles, like you said, that happen that, you know, nobody wants to bring up or say out loud, but yeah, I'm not just, yeah. Time out.
I just said it.
There you go.
You did, yeah.
So that, that caused some of us to rethink our, our views.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. So we're going to poll the vo, the board for next Tuesday, whether next, next Tuesday is virtual or in-person.
Mr. Delaparca, how would you like to meet next week?
Next Tuesday, virtual. Thank you.
Mr. Ellis, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
For next Tuesday, virtual.
Mr. Price?
Next Tuesday, live in-person.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Teachers are in our schools. I think we should be live.
Mrs. Summer?
Virtual.
Mrs. Salagi?
We have people working in the buildings. We should be live also.
Mrs. Byrd?
Um, I, I vote live, but I need to be assured that all board members are honest when they're filling out their health screening.
Yep.
It's four, four, Mr. Castellano.
So as, as I've stated.
Can Mr. Ellis break the tie? You know, Mr. Castellano?
Mr., Mrs. Salagi, I'm, I'm speaking now. I have the floor. I'll recognize you.
Yes, Mr. Ellis already told us how he felt. And we had a.
Mr. Ellis already told us how he felt and we had a very difficult time tonight and you, you won't even recognize his, his. His feelings on this, that's not nice.
Well, um, it's not nice to, hmm. Mute myself.
Mr. Ellis is no longer in attendance at the meeting, I wish he was. My vote is for next week only, for next week, virtual.
Which leaves us in a four-four tie, Mr. Castellano.
Mr. Castellano, excuse me, Mr. President.
My, okay, I have a suggestion on how we break this, but you, you go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, um. I know that we, um. Have people uh that are, that are in the buildings and um. Some students are returning, I just think that it's, if it's, if it's one more, if we're voting for one more week to be um. Virtual and then looking at, you know, possibly going live for the, you know, in October. I, I just think that, you know, as board members, we do, we have struggled through some technology issues and we had to do it three to four times, maybe a month at the most. Maybe three or four times and we have teachers and parents and families who are going through techn- technological struggles every single day. So if we can, you know, kind of go through one more week. Um, at least to kind of. Decide, you know, on vote next and hopefully everyone will be there, um, and also that everyone is honest about their. Health screening when we ask the questions, whether you visit outside of a state or not and whether you're, how you're feeling, I think those are ish, those are things. That have to be in place as well and and I think the public needs to know that, if that's some of the hesitation. So it's not anything about, um, you know, a battle of live or, um, you know, in-person or virtual. You know, it's, it's also about people's health and people's safety, so. I mean, I don't know what we're going to do about the tie, I would, I guess, I guess I definitely have to be quiet and hear what you had to say, Mr. President, about your possible solutions, so.
Well, can I add something, can we just piggyback off of what just, uh, Tamika just said? I agree, we expect families and teachers to figure out technology, I think that for one more week, our board members can figure it out.
You know what, I um, I will just make this simpler for everyone, I'm changing my vote to virtual. And um, so then we don't have to worry about a tiebreaker, it's one more week, we can all persevere through it and um. You know, let's just be the leaders that we were voted to be, so I'll change my vote to move us along.
Thank you, okay, so we have that resolved, uh, we're moving forward, um. We, uh, I'm going to see if administration has any comments, uh, we do have to go back into executive briefly. There will not be any action taken, we just have to discuss something, hopefully it'll be brief. Let's see if any of our administrators have anything and then we're going to navigate our way back into executive. Anything, guys?
One comment, as board secretary more than administrator, um, we just sent the invite for the second executive session at a separate link, you can go to your Google Meet and find it there. Um, for those three that had issues getting onto this meeting, I hope you can get onto executive, but if you cannot, just quickly text me when it comes time and I'll, um. I don't know why, because you were all here for roll call and went to executive successfully, so I'm hoping there was just a glitch with this meeting, um, that's my little comment, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Anaya, excuse us, Ms. Floyd, you said that you sent another link.
I did, you can either go through your email and find the link there or you can go to Google Meets. And it'll be there for you on your Waffle, like if you go to Waffle and then Meet, it'll be there as well.
And just one last.
I'm ready, yeah.
Dr. Grucci, oh, and I'm the administrative team, of course, thank you, but I wanted to say that, I know you talked about possibly doing a back-to-school, a virtual back-to-school night. And I just wanted to put it out there that um, that on the district I work in, we did a back, a virtual back-to-school night. And it, 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 it wasn't bad at all, it was, you know, the links, the Google Meet links, um. By teacher, you make it accessible and parents came and. Teachers were there and the ministry is able to hop into different Google Meets and have the um, open house. Via Google Meets and it real, it, it went well, so I just wanted to put that out there, if that's something you're definitely thinking about, it is doable and it's, it, it was, it wasn't bad, so. That's good to know, I'll be, we need to call and maybe find out more details on that, so thank you for sharing. Okay.
Okay, thank you all very much, so I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn public session.
Show made, Lou Delabarka.
Mr. Price, I second.
Okay, Mr. Delabarka, Mr. Price, show of hands, uh, to our public and everyone, uh, good night and thank you very much, we will see you next week. Uh, board members will see you on the other side, we are adjourned.
Um, Amy, if you can, I think we have to go back open to then close?
We do.
Okay, so I'll let them know in executive, so public, you're going to see a message that says, we are in executive session, we will come back into open to adjourn, we do not plan on having any action. Thank you. Pushing that in adjournment because Dr. Grucci, oh, Mr. Price, Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Salagi cannot get out of the other meeting and get into this one. It keeps coming out and they cannot get in, so we're just going to say, we have a few board members here, we did close, we are doing a motion. Mr. Delabarka, sounds like you're doing it and then we will take a second for Mrs. Byrd, motion approved, we're closing.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Take care, guys, thank you very much.